...political prisoners who are arbitrarily arrested, tortured, ill-treated and detained in inhuman conditions with more than two sixty non-governmental organizations closed and independent media wiped out. According to 2020 manifesto of the government of the Slovak Republic, I quote, "The protection of human rights and fundamental freedoms as well as the promotion of the rule of law is a key criteria in advocating of the foreign policy interests of the Slovak Republic." End of quote. I am proud to state at this noble forum that the 2021 year was a milestone in mainstreaming human rights agenda into the Slovak foreign policy. A very first concept paper for the promotion of human rights and democracy in the world was adopted by the Ministry of Foreign and European Affairs on 24th of May 2021. Subsequently, in July, our ministry appointed the first ever Slovak ambassador for human rights. The creation of this position underlines our deeper commitment to protecting and promoting human rights. However, the year 2021 was also a year of the self-reflection to rectify the wrongdoings from the past. Does the government of the Slovak Republic issued an apology for victims of sterilization of women carried out not fully in accordance with the law, carried out in years 1966 until 1989, and also for some practices which continued also in years 1990 till 2004 affecting mostly Roma women? My government, also in response to the rise in misinformation, hate speech and antisemitism, apologized in 2021 once again for the actions of the wartime Slovak Republic and for the adoption of the Jewish Code, which took away the basic rights of our Jewish fellow citizens more than eighty years ago. The Slovak Republic also initiated, together with Austria and the Czech Republic, a joint statement on the fight against antisemitism during the last Human Rights Council session on 4th of October 2021. The statement has been so far endorsed by some fifty states. Mr. President, I have started my intervention with addressing the situation in Ukraine, and I cannot but conclude in the same manner. Bearing in mind a grave situation on the ground and non-budgetary constraints of office of the United Nations High Commissioner for Human Rights, the Slovak Republic decided to provide a special contribution of 100,000 euros on behalf of the Slovak Republic to the Human Rights Monitoring Mission in Ukraine. This contribution is primarily focused on protection of civilians in armed conflict, protection of physical integrity rights, including prevention and prosecution of arbitrary detention and torture, monitoring of violence, threats and hate speech against individuals or groups of individuals. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Excellency. And now I give the floor to Her Excellency, Ms. Patricia Scotland, Secretary General of the Commonwealth. You have the floor.
Mr. President, distinguished delegates, I am honored to represent the Commonwealth at this eminent council. Our family of fifty-four nations, home to more than 2.5 billion people, sixty percent of whom are under the age of thirty, is bound by history, tradition and shared values. Human rights are enshrined in our charter, both as a central obligation and as a cornerstone of our wider commitment to peace, democracy and championing the most vulnerable. I can say with my hand on my heart that our devotion to human rights is more than an abstract pledge. It is alive in our work and our determination for the Commonwealth to be a force for good in the world. Because human rights put people front and center, compelling us to consider the most vulnerable and focus our efforts on those who are suffering most. A year ago, when I addressed this council, I described the pandemic as a human rights emergency. This has been borne out directly in the threat to life, health and livelihoods, and it's been borne out more broadly in the exacerbation of existing vulnerabilities and inequalities, in new forms of exclusion and in the intensification of exposure to harm or violence, especially amongst women, girls and marginalized groups. The reality is that every kind of global emergency is a human rights emergency, and it follows that human rights must be at the heart both of our immediate response and at the heart of our long-term efforts to build back better, stronger, fairer and more resilient. For the pandemic, that means urgent action to ensure equitable access to vaccines across the world as the fastest way out of the acute phase of the crisis. And it means a long-term support for all nations to build strong, resilient, high-quality health services to which everyone has access. This focus is at the heart of the memorandum of understanding signed last month between the Commonwealth Secretariat and the World Health Organization. By working together, we can deliver more for our member states. For the climate emergency, it means a commitment to a rights-based response. I highly commend this council for adopting the resolution recognizing the right to a clean, healthy and sustainable environment. The task now is to follow this with concrete action. In this, you will always find a willing partner in me and the whole Commonwealth Secretariat. And it means we need to scale up our commitment to tackling the ongoing emergency of violence against women and girls. I have called this the hidden pandemic. It is an intolerable fact that one in three women globally will experience physical or sexual violence in their lifetime, with calls to available helplines increasing fivefold during the pandemic. So I invite everybody within and beyond our family of nations to join our Commonwealth Says No More campaign. This flagship campaign is a unique platform linking government, business, civil society and citizens in a bid to end domestic and sexual violence once and for all. Cutting across all of our work, from COVID to climate change and tackling violence, is a commitment to the Sustainable Development Goals. If the Universal Declaration of Human Rights is the common destination, the Sustainable Development Goals are the roadmap. That is why SDG implementation is such a central focus for our Human Rights Unit as well as the whole Commonwealth Secretariat. Much of our commitment to human rights comes alive in the work of our Small States Office here in Geneva, and I thank the Commissioner for our continued close partnership. Thirty-two of the forty-two small states in the world are in the Commonwealth. Our support for them is both principled and practical. I champion small states everywhere I go because I have the duty and mandate to do so, and the moral, political and economic imperative to help small states is a central motivation for me as Secretary General. But I fiercely believe that centralizing the needs of small states helps everybody. Addressing our greatest vulnerabilities strengthens the whole. Strengthening the whole enables every nation, every community in every part of our world to be more peaceful, more secure, happier, healthier and more prosperous. And, Mr. President, the pandemic has reminded us just how important and how fragile security, health and prosperity can be. This belief and this spirit will guide me and the whole Secretariat as we look forward to the forthcoming Commonwealth Heads of Government meeting in Glagari in June. And I hope it can guide all of us in every setting to bring human rights alive with the most vulnerable at the heart of our approach, not just when it's easy, but when it is hard. Because it is in these moments when the human spirit is truly tested.
Thank you. And now I give the word to Her Excellency, Ms. Julisa Mantilla Falcón, Commissioned and President of the Inter-American Human Rights Organization of States. She has the word.
Mr. President, distinguished delegate, I have the honor to address to the UN Human Rights Council on behalf of the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights, a principal autonomous body of the Organization of American Estates. Two years after the declaration of the pandemic, it seems impossible to avoid commenting on the affliction that it has represented and its severe and ongoing impact on human rights, not only in the Americas but throughout the world. The Commission has made significant contributions to inter-American human rights standards by adopting Resolutions Number One, 2020, and Four, 2020 on Pandemic and Human Rights in the Americas and the Inter-American Guidelines of the Human Rights of Persons with COVID-19. In addition, the monitor of the situation has been made public through several press releases highlighting the impact of the pandemic on the life of various groups of people in vulnerable situations in the Americas. In this context, the Commission has reinforced its permanent space of dialogue with the different users of the Inter-American System, promoting periodic meetings with the states and civil society organization. In addition to the challenge brought by the pandemic, we have found the persistence of discrimination and violence against women, LGBTI people, Afro-descendants and indigenous people, children and adolescents, particularly against human rights defenders, journalists and social leaders. As we also take a moment to remember the current situation unfolding in the Ukrainian territory that has generated the forced displacement of hundreds of thousands of people and other severe humanitarian crises around the world, we recall that this situation adds to more than eighty-four million displaced people in the world. This is an era of forced displacement, and some of this humanitarian and human mobility challenge take place in the Americas. Furthermore, in this context, poverty, increased repression, the disproportionate use of force, acts of violence and economic and political turmoil for forced displacement and further human rights vulnerabilities. The region has made progress in this democratic development, but anti-democratic derision persists in our society. In particular, the Commission has seen the struggles and setbacks in protecting human rights, the separation of powers or space of democratic participation, forced displacement in Cuba, Nicaragua and Venezuela, for example. Concerning Cuba, the Commission recognized sever violation of the fundamental element and institution of representative democracy, which are essential for realizing human rights. In particular, the Commission has followed up on the repression of activists, human rights dependents and regime opponents, such as a bureaucratic restriction on political rights and the right to freedom of expression. Regarding Nicaragua, into 2021, the Commission notes the intensification of a new stage of repression in the country. Repressive measures took the shape of a series of steps action that put an end to the opposition participation in the general election held on November 7. In particular, the Commission observed the cancellation of the legal status of opposition parties, the detention and criminalization of leaders, including pre-candidates for the president, through the approval and use of criminal laws that arbitrarily restricted the political rights of the Nicaraguan population. Dozens of thousands of people have already fled the countries in the political repression cycles of 2018. Likewise, the Commission published the report, Concentration of Power and Awakening of the Rule of Law, in October 2021. In this report, the Commission states that the climate of repression and the closing of democratic space show the Nicaraguan government's will to perpetuate itself indefinitely in power, thus maintaining its privilege and immunities in a context of corruption, electoral fraud and structural impunity. About the current crisis in Venezuela, the Commission has continually monitored the country situation. In different states, the Commission note the inexistence of the rule of law due to a series of factors such as, one, the absence of a system of checks and balance, two, the lack of independence of the different branches of government, and three, the high concentration of power in the head of the executive branch. The circumstance has facilitated the perpetuation of serious human rights violations and the deterioration of the general population living conditions, impacting the displacement of six million people since 2015. It's also important to highlight that last year, the Commission concluded works of the interdisciplinary group of independent experts, CAE, in Bolivia, created to investigate acts of violence and human rights violations that occurred in that country between September 1st and December 31st, 2019. The report concludes enough of violence unacceptable in a democratic society and human rights violations committed by state agents, violence and abuse that have racial and gender dimensions in many cases. The report analyzed the state responsibility for this act under international human rights law. Finally, it pointed way forward for Bolivia towards establishment of indisputable truth, the prosecution of the responsible at all levels, the application of appropriate sanctions within the framework of due process and fair trial standard, compensation for the damage suffered by the victims and the adoption in broad democratic consensus of public policies for the non-repetition of these crimes. Undoubtedly, the structural human rights violations facing the region alongside the COVID-19 pandemic will continue to challenge the Americas. In this context, it will be imperative to continue focusing on strengthening democracy and human rights institutions in the Americas, aiming to promote state responses focused on respect for human rights. I want to affirm the Commission's willingness and readiness to provide technical assistance to states, regional bodies, civil society organization and other institutions for institutional strengthening and the formulation, implementation and evaluation of public policy to prevent and tackle human rights violations in the Americas. The UN Human Rights Council can count on the Inter-American Commission's commitment to strengthening the respect, promotion and defense of human rights in the Americas, and doing this by putting the victims and their family at the center of its priorities, listening to the concerns of civil society organization and deepening the dialogue with the states of the region and all stakeholders, aiming for the construction of positive work agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I give the word to Her Excellency, Mr. Jim Steiner, Administrator of the Program of the United Nations for Development. He has the word.
Distinguished President of the UN Human Rights Council, Ambassador Federico Villegas, my dear colleague, High Commissioner Michelle Bashley, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. It is a privilege to address this high-level segment of the Human Rights Council. Today I...
...and children. More than half a million have already fled from Russian missiles and shells. I will not recite all facts of new war crimes and crimes against humanity that the Russian troops have committed since my previous statement two days ago. The list is so long that it will run out of time. The crimes are so barbaric that it is difficult to comprehend. Facing the total resistance of the Ukrainian population, Putin's regime has proceeded to widespread use of indiscriminate weapons such as multiple rocket launchers and aerial bombs against the residential areas. Ukrainians are being killed by Russian ballistic missiles and thermobaric weapons. Just yesterday, Kiev, Kharkiv, Zhtomir, Mariupol, Melitopol and many other cities and towns sustained heavy shelling that killed dozens of innocents, including children. Ukraine deeply regrets that a student from India has become a victim of this shelling by the Russian Armed Forces in Kharkiv. We offer our deepest sympathies to India and the relatives of the victim. A Chinese citizen was also injured in another Ukrainian city because of Russia's deadly attacks. The Ukrainian and foreign citizens have become hostages of the Russian Armed Aggression against Ukraine. In Kiev, Russian murderers hit the city TV tower, killing five Passybaris. One of the missiles dropped on the Babyn Yar Holocaust Memorial, a sacred place of commemoration of Jews, Ukrainians, Roma and representatives of other ethnic groups killed by Nazis during the World War II. What an irony, when victims of Nazis are being killed for the second time by Nazi modern followers. As the President of Ukraine asked, what was the point of repeating the slogan "Never Again in Eighty Years"? It's already clear that the goal of Russia is not an occupation only, it is genocide. On 7th and 8th of March 2022, the International Court of Justice will hold public hearings in the case concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation. Also, the prosecutor of the International Criminal Court has decided to proceed with opening of a formal investigation into the situation in Ukraine. Unprovoked escalation of Russian aggression against Ukraine gives reasons to believe that crimes within the jurisdiction of the ICC continue to be committed on the territory of Ukraine. Along with the situation in Crimea and Donbass, recent events suggest that aggressor's troops continue to commit war crimes and crimes against humanity. Dear colleagues, one might consider observing the bloodshed in Ukraine, that it is not my war. It is a mistake. The evil will never stop, it requires more and more space to conquer. If tolerated, it advances further and further. The draft resolution is one of the building blocks to build a wall to stop it, to stop in Ukraine and not to let it go further. The wall that will protect all of you, in particular younger generations. Distinguished delegates, by voting today, you also reconfirm your country's commitment to the UN Charter. After the vote, I invite you ambassadors and representatives to stop by the Indonesian Lounge and to sign this little blue book. Little but of global magnitude. Every vote in favor of the resolution and every signature of country that voted in favor would be a historical reconfirmation of the Charter. It is very easy, ladies and gentlemen, to sign the Charter at a time of peace. It is the duty to sign and reconfirm and implement the Charter at the time of war. So stop by the Indonesian Lounge, put the name of your country if you voted in favor. And after you sign this book, I will hand it over to the Secretary General for keeping the book in his office in front of him. So at every single moment, the Secretary General will get an inspiration from the overwhelming majority of nations who still trust in the UN, who still trust in the UN Charter. There is a very fragile gentleman, a very old one. He was born in a territory that was part of the Kingdom of Hungary. He will celebrate his 122 years birthday in nine days. His name is Benjamin Ferenc. Benjamin Ferenc was an investigator of war crimes, a chief prosecutor at one of the twelve subsequent trials of Nuremberg. Later, he became an advocate of international rule of law and for the establishment of the International Criminal Court. With the permission of the producer, I would play a couple of seconds of his votes, and I want you to listen very carefully.
It's been hard to do. It's three words, law, not war. If you can do that, you save every day billions of dollars, which you can use to deal with the legitimate complaints of all people who need medical care, students who have to pay for their tuition, all the legitimate complaints which could be solved if we didn't spend the money on weapons to kill them instead of helping them. And that is the current system. Now, how are you going to do it? I will end by telling you how to do it and the principles which have guided me. There are three principles. One, never give up. Two, never give up. Three, I hear you, never give up. Good luck. I wish you the best of luck.
Show respect to the Charter. Show respect to the Secretary General. Show respect to this gentleman who will celebrate 102 years since his birthday. I call upon all responsible member states to support the draft. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. We shall now proceed to consider Draft Resolution A/ES-11/L1 entitled "Aggression Against Ukraine". Before I open the floor for explanations of vote before the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Russian Federation.
President.
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 Этот документ не будет способствовать прекращению военных действий. Наоборот, он может одобрить киевских... ободрить киевских радикалов и националистов и дальше любой ценой определять политику в стране, удерживая в заложниках мирное население. Причем не в переносство, а в прямом смысле этого слова. Сейчас именно так и происходит в ряде крупных городов Украины, где население используется в качестве живого щита. Сегодня стало известно, что Вооруженные Силы Украины не дают мирным жителям Мариуполя покинуть город. Удерживают их, в том числе женщины и детей, в одной из школ Мариуполя. Насильно доставляют обратно все гражданских лиц, которые пытались покинуть город по предоставленным гуманитарным коридорам. Нам также известны и планируемых националистическими батальонами провокации, которые они заготовили с участием гражданского населения, с тем чтобы в последствии обвинить в этом российские войска. Вопреки нормам международного гуманитарного права, в жилых кварталах размещается военная техника, системы запала огня, артиллерийские установки. Мы сегодня передадим примеры подобных действий руководству ООН, которое до настоящего времени утверждало, что не располагает подобными свидетельствами. Хотя видеоролики, снятые простыми украинскими гражданами, свободно распространяются в интернете. Ответственность за это полностью лежит на украинских властях, так же как и за безответственную и преступную раздачу оружия всем желающим, включая выпущенных гестюрем заключенных. Это уже привело к массовым случаям грабежей, убийств и морадюрств. Уважаемые коллеги, ваш отказ поддержать проект сегодня стал бы голосованием в пользу мирной Украины, свободной от радикализма, неонацизма, живущей в мире со своими соседями и отказавшейся от внешнего управления. Именно на достижение этих целей направлена наша специальная военная операция, которую авторы резолюции пытаются представить в качестве агрессии. Мы сегодня слышали от украинского представителя слова о нацизме, но он стыдливо умолчал разгули неонацизма на самой Украине, о бесчинствах неонацистских и националистических радикальных организаций, о факельных шествиях и прославлении пособников Гитлера. Те, кто интересовался развитием украинского преисыла, прекрасно понимают его динозиды. Действуя сегодня, мы прежде всего стремимся остановить восьмилетнюю войну майданного режима с населением Донбасса. За прошедшие годы наша страна сделала все возможное и невозможное, чтобы избежать такого сценария. Мы, по выражению генерального секретаря, кстати говоря, перевернули все камни и постучались в каждую дверь, однако так и не были услышаны. Жители Донбасса продолжали и продолжают бомбить, не собираясь останавливаться на четырнадцать тысяч погибших, подавляющее большинство из которых приходится на жителей ДНР ЛНР. Цели нашей специальной операции объявлены на основании статьи 51 Устава ООН, выполняются и будут достигнуты. При этом мы не наносим ударов по гражданским объектам и мирным жителям. Не верьте огромному количеству фейков, распространяемых в интернете на этот счет. Эти фейки пеклись как пирожки в центре информационно-психологической операции специальных сил операции Украины. Этот центр вчера был уничтожен. Мирный сценарий для Украины можно ускорить, если радикалы позаботятся о сохранности жизни граждан своей страны и не будут прикрываться им. Такого призыва в тексте, поставленного на голосование документа, нет. В нем также ничего не сказано о незаконном перевороте в Киеве, когда в феврале 2014 года при попустительстве Германии, Франции и Польши и при поддержке Соединенных Штатов был свергнут законный избранный президент страны. В этом проекте нет ничего и о том, что новые националистические власти тотчас же ограничили права граждан на использование русского языка. Это дало старт огромной цепочке нарушений базовых прав жителей Востока страны, не только Востока, включая самые ценные права, право на жизнь. Многие из вас не хотят ничего слышать о трагедии, которая началась на Украине после майданного переворота 2014 года, о заживо сожженных людях в Одессе, о преследованиях и убийствах несогласных. И самым ярким проявлением этого стала развязанная Киевом война против Донбасса. Ничего в документе нет и о том, что на протяжении восьми лет Соединенные Штаты и Европа накачивали и сейчас накачивают Украину в вооружении, помогая майданному режиму убивать мирных жителей на Донбассе. Оправдывали лояльные киевские власти за полное игнорирование Минских договоренностей и саботаж резолюции Совета Безопасности 2020. Наконец, этот проект — это очевидный попытка тех, кто за последние десятилетия совершил бесчисленное количество агрессий, незаконных с точки зрения международного права военных операций, переворотов, одним из которых стал и майданный переворот на Украине. Выставить себя поборниками международной законности. Благодарю вас.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Serbia.
I most sincerely regret the events taking place in the east of Europe. Russia and Ukraine have always been friendly country to the Republic of Serbia, and Serbian people perceive Russians and Ukrainians as fraternal nations. We felt loss of life for which men in Ukraine is true tragedy. The Republic of Serbia is committed to observing principles of territorial integrity and political independence of states as one of the basic principles of international law based on UN Charter and final act from Helsinki from 1975, which guarantees the right of states to unviability of borders, just like it is committed to preservation of sovereignty and integrity of its own territory. The Republic of Serbia likewise advocating respect for territorial integrity of other sovereign nations and regardless of not agreeing with all formulation stated in resolution will vote in favor of resolution. I am obliged to point to PP 13 and remind to the first attack against a sovereign state on the soil of Europe after Second World War took place not so long ago in 1999, when nineteen countries attacked at that time Federal Republic of Yugoslavia, primarily Republic of Serbia, when there was no appropriate reaction of such distinguishing institution to this flagrant violation of UN Charter. Despite the fact they still suffer from consequence of severe violation of fundamental principles of international law by others, Serbia is not giving up these principles even today. The Republic of Serbia will continue to advocate termination conflicts, expecting that the parties will invest additional efforts into reaching diplomatic solution and creating condition for peace throughout dialogue. Serbia will provide all kind humanitarian aid to endangered Ukrainian citizen will remaining committed to peace and consistent respect for international law. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Serbia, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic.
Спасибо, господин Президент. Господин Президент, именно проекты, которые вынесли наше решение, напоминают нам, что это явно представляет собой неприятный характер, и это является средством политического давления. Мы предполагаем, что проекты, которые вынесли наше решение, имеют целью обеспечения безопасности, и это является средством политического давления. Мы предполагаем, что проекты, которые вынесли наше решение, имеют целью обеспечения безопасности, и это является средством политического давления. Мы предполагаем, что проекты, которые вынесли наше решение, имеют целью обеспечения безопасности, и это является средством политического давления. Именно проекты, которые вынесли наше решение, представляют собой значительный политический неприятный характер. Если бы государства США и других стран были настолько преданными критикой политического давления, то они бы не были настолько преданными критикой политического давления, и не были бы преданными критикой политического давления. Или бы государства США и других стран были настолько преданными критикой политического давления, и не были бы преданными критикой политического давления. Это нахека от сараги этих государств, и 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 это нахека от сараги этих государств, и
I thank the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines.
Господин Президент, из дебата в течение двух дней ясно видно, что союза между Соединенными Нацией объединены в своем обращении к окончанию войны в Украине и к возвращению к дипломатии. Стоинцент и Гренадинс хотят предоставить explanation of its vote on the draft resolution before us today. Господин Президент, Стоинцент и Гренадинс будут голосовать в favor of the draft resolution. We will vote in accordance with our steadfast commitment to upholding the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter, which formed the core of multilateralism and gave birth to our United Nations seventy-six years ago. It bears repeating, Господин Президент, that these principles underscore respect for sovereignty, political independence, and territorial integrity of states and enjoin member states to refrain from the threat or the use of force in the conduct of their international relations. Our support for the draft resolution is rooted in our conviction that the strict adherence to international law, including international humanitarian and human rights law, and the principles of peace, dialogue, and compromise for the preservation of humanity is not optional. As a small island developing state, full compliance with the bedrock principles of international law remains an existential issue. We take the floor again, Господин Президент, to repeat our call for these principles to be applied consistently and upheld as universal truths instead of selective, uneven, and unpredictable tools to further great power ambition anywhere and by anyone. Historically and in recent times, we have witnessed the naked hypocrisy, double standards, and cynical misapplication of international law, which we have condemned. Today, we strongly emphasize that our august assembly should apply the fundamental principles of our charter impartially, irrespective of the size, economic, and military power of the principles involved. Господин Президент, amidst of prevailing global challenges such as the climate crisis and the COVID-19 pandemic, we simply cannot afford another conflict. War does not manage grievances. Saint Vincent and the Grenadines therefore calls for an immediate ceasefire to avert further bloodshed, human suffering, and a global catastrophe, and to engage in peaceful dialogue to find a solution to this war post-haste. Today, we must unite for peace. Thank you, and peace profound to all.
I thank the distinguished representative of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines. We have heard the last speaker in explanations of vote before the vote. Before proceeding to take a decision on draft resolution A/ES-11/L1, I wish to address the question concerning the majority required for the adoption of the draft resolution. In light of Article 18, Paragraph 2 and 3 of the Charter of the United Nations, is there any objection to taking action on draft resolution A/ES-11/L1 by a two-thirds majority of the membership of... Majority of the members present and voting? I see no objection. The two-thirds majority of members present and voting is therefore required for the adoption of draft resolution A/ES-11/L1. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolution A/ES-11/L1 entitled "Aggression Against Ukraine". For your information, the draft resolution has closed for ease sponsorship. I now give the floor to the representative of the Secretariat.
Господин Президент, я хотел бы заявить, что с подачи решения на draft resolution and in addition to delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become the cosponsors of A/ES-11/L1, Barbados, and Cambodia. If any other country wish to cosponsor A/ES-11/L1, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. There is nothing further, Господин Президент?
I thank the representative of the Secretariat. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process.
和平稳定为重， 以各方普遍安全为重，
Russia is isolated and alone. And that's the cost, that the cost will keep rising until Russia relents. We have affirmed the UN Charter, pledged to address the horrific human rights and humanitarian crisis in Ukraine, and stood together in the battle for the soul of the world. Last night, at his State of the Union address, President Biden commended the courage of the Ukrainian people. He declared that the United States of America stands with Ukraine, and quoted President Zelensky when he said, "Light will win over darkness." Today, at the United Nations, light has won over darkness. A hundred forty-one states voted to support this amendment. The world, as President Biden said, is choosing the side of peace and security. Now, as the situation grows graver, every day in Ukraine, we must keep the momentum going. We must do everything we can to help the Ukrainian people, to hold Russia accountable, to match our strong words with strong actions. Let us continue to come together to support the Ukrainian people, and let us demonstrate the true power and true purpose of the United Nations for all. Thank you very much.
Ambassador, how satisfied are you with the fact that 141 countries supported the resolution? Did you expect that?
Uh, we worked for that.
Is the number the right one?
What about the humanitarian resolution? Sorry.
That's still up for discussion. I can't give you anything.
But it's above your expect, uh, you know, the numbers, the numbers abstention, the numbers.
We would have hoped that the thirty-five people who have stayed would have voted yes with us as well. So it was not at our expectation. We would have hoped for more. Thank you.
Hey, uh, good, uh, is it morning or afternoon? I'm not sure. Look, um, I just want to say from the part of the European Union that last week, we had the Security Council trying its best, but blocked by one country, Russia, for taking its responsibility. Immediately after that happened, we got to work, uh, drafting this resolution together with Ukraine and very many other countries of the world. And today, the General Assembly has taken its responsibility. The message in this resolution is very, very clear, and the voting pattern is very, very clear. Uh, Russia stands isolated. Russia has been asked by the world to pull back, stop the aggression, and seek diplomacy instead of war. We have heard so many passionate statements over the last few days, manifesting what I just said, that, uh, the world has stated clearly, stop the aggression, withdraw troops, and abide by the rules of the UN Charter and protect this organization. So I just want to say too that the European Union and the world stands with Ukraine. I thank you very much. With the business, because there is humanitarian. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here with, uh, my very good friend and colleague, representative of the European Union to the United Nations. Ulof used to be permanent representative of Sweden, and we used to sit together, uh, on the council during the membership of Ukraine and Sweden. It's a defining day, as I said in my statement. I'm happy to report, or rather to confirm what you saw with your own eyes. The United Nations is still alive and going through the process of catharsis. I believe in the United Nations. Now, people of Ukraine have more reasons to believe in the United Nations. It is just the beginning. Don't think that it was the end in itself, or a purpose in itself, the vote. The vote is a powerful message to the Russian Federation. But I need to refer you to what I said in my statement as well. I still believe that there are citizens of the Russian Federation of dignity, who unfortunately, right now, are cut from the information about how many Russian soldiers are killed in Ukraine. And as soon as they learn the magnitude of the tragedy, I hope they will stop the dictatorship in their country, and the war is going to be over. As you know, due to the actions of the Russian Federation in the Security Council, the Security Council last month was not able to perform its duties, and we had to move, as asked by the Security Council in fact, to the General Assembly. Nevertheless, the Security Council remains busy with Ukrainian issues with the Russian crisis, and I call on you to call it Russian crisis, stop calling it Ukrainian crisis. The only country that set up, launched this crisis was Russian Federation. So the Security Council remains busy with, uh, issues, how to, to address like humanitarian problems. I express my sincere gratitude to all nations who have already came forward, offered assistance in money, goods, shelter. I need to ask you to, uh, to, to deliver my gratitude to the local authorities of every single country where the refugees are coming and finding their shelter. And those are not only the Ukrainians. I read every day the charts with the nationalities of people who fled to Poland, Hungary, Slovakia, Moldova, Romania. It's like the United Nations there. I already read posts from some Africans who say they dream about coming back to beautiful Ukraine. We will rebuild Ukraine. And I tell my staff, I tell my family, the images of buildings destroyed, they are horrifying. But it does not matter at the moment. It's lives of people that matter at the moment. We will rebuild the buildings. We will rebuild every single building, or we will build something better with the help of the international community. So don't be misled by all these malarkeys of Nibenzia and his cronies. And I think that the picture of the results speaks for itself. Thank you.
Can I just, uh, can I just say one word before you go and put questions to Sergey? Sergey, my good friend, referred to the fact that Sweden, in my previous capacity, worked with Ukraine together on the Security Council. It's true that our colors of the Swedish flag happen to be blue and yellow, as do the, as are the colors of the European Union. But today, above all, those are the colors of Ukraine that we all need to carry and carry them high. I want to reemphasize what I said before. Russia is isolated. Russian aggression will not stand. Today, the world has spoken up against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ulof.
Mr. Ambassador, what would you like to say to the countries that voted no?
I would like to say once again that, in spite of the horrific actions by the criminal regime of Putin, we still believe that there are citizens of Russia who maintain their dignity. So when you tell me that Russia voted against, it's Putin's regime, criminals from Russia who voted against. It is regime of Belarus who voted against, because there are wonderful Belarusians, Belarusian people who also fight for their freedom. So make distinctions in your reporting between the criminals and between the dignity of the people oppressed in those countries.
Thank you. President Zelensky last night asked US President Joe Biden to deliver a useful address regarding Ukraine. I wanted to know your thoughts about the President Biden's State of the Union regarding Ukraine. Were you satisfied?
You know, I lived in Washington and I worked in Washington for many years. I saw many presidents speaking, the American presidents, foreign presidents, addressing, uh, the, uh, US Congress in full session. I saw my colleague, Ambassador Ukraine, on a balcony. She was almost crying. I was watching, uh, the address by Biden in, uh, the comfort of my office, and, uh, I was almost crying. But those are not the emotions that matter. That's the resolution, the resolute posture of the American people, not just by the politicians in the Senate, by the American people that matters. The spirit of freedom and liberty is genetically in the blood of Ukrainians and Americans, of the British, of the Poles, of all freedom-loving nations on this planet. So the speech was very well received, and I am sure that the nature of this country is that every single word of President Biden will be followed by specific actions, by specific actions of his government, and by specific actions of the members of the US Congress. I'm not speaking. Thank you. I understood, well understood. As I said, there is a very good friend of mine, Ambassador Oksana Markarova, who is in charge of bilateral relationship, and she is twenty-four seven, working with US government. Please address her question, uh, address questions on the cooperation with the United States beyond the United Nations to her. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, tell me.
Ambassador, uh, you got this, um, overwhelming vote and majority to support your resolution. Ambassador, you got this overwhelming vote and majority to support your resolution. What's next in terms of the United Nations? What steps are you taking?
We are working, we are working 24/7. We are working at all levels. I have meetings with the leadership of the Secretariat. I had a meeting yesterday. We suggested certain things, we expecting certain things. I want to, before I go, I need to tell you something. My mission is overwhelmed with the support of my colleagues from all over the world. You know, I receive deputations, delegations of ambassadors and their colleagues with coffee in the morning, with some snacks in the afternoon. I receive so many calls from lawyers, from politicians, from PR companies, from lobbyists. And I say, no, thank you very much. We Ukrainians are fit to do our job on your own, on our own. And we are doing our job. We will ask you when we need your help with research, with speech writing, with preparing papers. We are working with, the teams of international lawyers are working in the HAC for years now on the cases opened in the HAC. But I want to take this moment to express my gratitude to every citizens of this city, to every citizen of New York, to every foreigner working for any mission of, in the United Nations. We are overwhelmed with your support. Go to the mission of Singapore at night and see the Ukrainian colors. Teeny nations, small nations, brave as a tiger when it comes to the principles. And the result, as I said already, speaks for itself. Thank you very much. Have a good day.